I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have regrets from Councillor Lucien LeBlanc and Councillor Junior Murphy. We'll move on to number two, approval of agenda. Anybody care to move the approval of agenda? You have something to add? Yes? Annette, go ahead.
It's a request for financial, a financial request that just came today for...
Is it a district community grant?
District, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
District community grant. So we'll put it under number eight.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any more additions?
I'm moved and seconded. The agenda has amended.
Seconded. Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carried. Okay. Conflict of interest declaration. Anybody have a conflict of interest around the table? Having heard none, we'll move on to number three, presentations. We don't have any. Number four, business arising from the minutes. We have an attachment, two pages. One is the municipal administration building and the other one is dangerous unsightly premises, policy review. Cao Muse, you have...
Pressing the refresh here. So I don't have that same issue. All right. Here we go. Yep. Voila. The admin building, I think there's a couple of items on the agenda. I guess my only comment here is that the building review committee has met as a consequence of the resolution passing requesting, excuse me, that community be engaged. We've met to talk about what that engagement might look like. And I will be sending a summary to council regarding that. But I mean ultimately, what it was is we talked about how many people ought to be engaged for us to be satisfied that in fact we're getting a representation of an appropriate amount of people. And I think the group, you know, indicated that perhaps 10% of the elector, of the total electors would be an appropriate amount, which is between 600 and 700 people. That sounds like a lot of people. It is. But if you divide it by district, it's about 66 to 77 people. Now, now it's not, and what we want out of those people is a response, right? It's not just a, it's not just that you've talked to 66 people and they've told you A or B. It's that we would develop a list of questions that council would approve, pre-approve, being appropriate to ask in that particular, on that particular topic. It might be, you know, where did you get information? You know, how many, you know, what is your feeling on the three options that are being presented? And the questions would be, would be set in a way that'd be, you know, fairly easy to read, fairly quick to respond, but at the same time enough questions that we would receive pretty good information from the community. We haven't finished that list of questions yet. We will. And we think that an online survey is certainly a good way to get input from people. You get their civic address, you get to know that they're residents of our aisle. We also recognize, just like in e-voting, that there are people that don't, don't want to or choose not to do these things online. These questions can easily be put on paper, can easily be distributed, and then we can put them in the system online so we can track, you know, the responses. So we had a lot of open conversation about how that might, how that might look, but before we get input, we'd like to get information out there. So some of it is already out there, but let's face it, the admin staff report on building options, you know, I think it's unrealistic for us to expect that somebody's going to go through 50 or 60 pages, you know. You know, a very small population will do that and we're very thankful for that. But at the same time, we understand we have to be a bit more brief with the information. So there's video, there's other ways that we can present the information. We intend to do all of that. So, and then that could be brought to, you know, that could be brought to a town hall meeting if that's the choice that you, that you come up with in your own community, or it can be done in a variety of different ways. Invite people to go online and check out the video and all that. So we'd like to, you know, put out the information in the best way possible and then perhaps in the survey, you know, ask where that information, like whether, whether that person saw any of that information, right? So that it tells us, you know, how are they being informed and what did they decide as a consequence of that? And you know, some people will say, look, I don't need to read or, or look at anything. I'm just gonna, you know, make my opinion known, and that's okay too, right? So, so that'll be an option. So that's what we're talking about, really high level, you know. I think when it comes to development of video and all that, that we can do that pretty, pretty fast. We have internal resources that we can do that. And, and, you know, we've already gone to media, et cetera, and we'll continue to do that. So I think that...
We also talked about the report being so long that chances are, you know, people will start reading that, but if it's too long, then all of a sudden you're not, you're not finishing it. So we, we talked about maybe condensing that, making sure all the information is there, however, but condensing it so that at least it might be a two-page or three-page rather than this long, because there's information in that report that really, it's not the information shouldn't be there, but there, there's sections of that that really doesn't have to be there for the public to know what, what the actual issues are, right? So we talked about that as well, and I, I think that might be something we're going to do. And I don't know about the newsletter?
Yes.
Okay. I wasn't sure because you hadn't mentioned it.
That's priority one. Yeah, sorry. I totally missed that.
That we would put it in the, in the, in the next newsletter as an insert, and that way everybody gets it, right? And if it's a shorter version, then at least that way perhaps more people, definitely more people will read it. But, but, but we have to know, they, they, you know, they have to be, when they, when they look at the newsletter, to know that there is an insert in there, not just have it in there because they might not look at it. But anyway, that was some of the discussions as well that took place.
Okay.
So that's, that's all I, that, you know, so that, that will have to come to, once we, we have the guts of it, I mean, and that's probably the guts of it verbally, but I think it should really, at our next council meeting, what I'd like to have is, I'll probably have to get your input on the newsletter piece before next meeting because that will have to be done before. So that'll go to you as council, it'll appreciate some input. And then really the questions are the key piece that I would need council's approval on, and I would want that by motion because the questions are very important, how they're asked are very important. We don't want to lead anyone down different paths. We want to be, we want to try to be, you know, open around the options, but at the same time get enough information out there so that they can make a decision almost, almost based on the questions, almost but not quite. So, anyway, so we'll, we'll probably get some help to develop those questions externally. And we'll bring that to you as soon as we can.
Okay. Okay. And the other one, the dangerous unsightly, anything to add on that?
The policy hasn't been amended yet, but we're actually doing the actions. So we don't, we don't, we don't need the policy to tell us that we're going to be proactive. We can choose to be proactive. It's, I think it's important in the future is that the policy defines what we're looking for, but, but the property, the property inspection department is actually, they're going to execute a plan to go in communities to, to do a proactive view of properties.
Good.
So the policy will be amended as soon as possible after that.
Okay. All right. So we'll move on for a voluntary disposition of property. And that's a 14-page attachment. I think that one's yours too?
Yes. At our last meeting, we had a motion passed to get an official position from the PVSC on this issue. The, verbally, the PVSC told, told me that there probably wouldn't be much. We did receive yesterday a response, which I forwarded to council, and it makes references to, to sections of the act that are difficult to follow unless you're, you got the act next to you. So I asked Real to decipher, and the position is such that it doesn't, it doesn't really comment on the voluntary disposition. It comments on 69A, and I think PVSC purposely stayed away from making a legal, taking a legal position on what 69A looks, what it means. And that's understandable because, because I think what they'll, what they'll say is that every municipality makes its own interpretation and, and they don't want to get in the middle of, of that because, you know, we're not seeking legal advice from the PVSC. So we did, expecting that, I did talk to the province of Nova Scotia and did include their response as an attachment. They, again, they don't take a position, but they, but they confirm that, that their interpretation of section 69 is, is, is the same as, as you've heard myself and Real say. However, you have two options available to you. One is that you agree with the advice that's been provided and, and there's the motion attached. And the second option is that council, you know, can disagree with the advice that they have been provided, and, and if that is in fact the case, they would look to amend the existing policy for involuntary disposition to, to be for voluntary disposition as well. So those are really your two options. You've had this document for a while, so I won't, I won't go into too much detail.
Okay. Councillor Muse?
Okay. I would like to make the motion that we move to, that we deny the taxpayer requests for a tax rebate on voluntary disposition of property in accordance with our policy and section 69 of the MGA.
I'll second that.
Okay. The motion has been moved and seconded. Councillor Surratt?
According to the emails that you sent, one of them stated that, from Trudy, and she, she never, she never did really reply why she had stated, she never went there at all, why she had stated at the, at the UNSM on voluntary, you know, and that, so that tells me she didn't want to, she didn't want to make a stand on it. She, she didn't reply to it, why she said that, and, and maybe you didn't ask her, why did you say that in front of, you know, blah, blah, blah? But she certainly stood, she didn't answer anything about voluntary at all from the emails you sent.
No, and, and it's, it's like we talked about the last meeting. You know, we do have the ability to request for a change in assessment, and I think that's what she was referring to in the meeting, that you can in fact request a change of assessment at any time. The nuance is that, is that it's not retroactive, right?
Yeah, no, that's right.
Right? So, and that was, and so, so, you know, I agree with what she said, in fact, that you can at any time request the adjustment. It's when the adjustment takes place that was the nuance, right? Which she couldn't have been aware of exactly the circumstances of that particular example, or maybe she was, but, but it's, it's possible that she wasn't. So, so I don't, I mean, I think that she provided the advice that she, she thought was correct under the circumstances. Unfortunately, you know, that didn't help this particular...
But really, in all, in all honesty, the question wasn't about this particular thing. It was about any, if anybody took a building down, no matter where it was at.
Yeah.
Yeah, or when it was.
Yeah.
Really, it was no one, but especially this particular person, no.
That's right. And, and again, the advice that she provided was correct. You can adjust the assessment at any time. It's just when does it actually apply to the taxation of the person?
That's right.
That was the nuance. That was what was lost somewhere in the communication, in my opinion.
You know what? Also, if I don't mind the chair...
Go ahead.
The advice that we've gotten from some of the deputy ministers or somebody in the department certainly states how, you know, we don't want to set a precedent, that's, that's for sure, you know, and starting this, what else will come out of it if we start making, you know, motions and this stuff? And I'm glad this was discussed and it was brought up and certainly well explained and yes, on the question.
Okay. So you've heard the motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary? Carried. Okay. Okay, we'll move on to five, financial report, which is also Cao Muse.
So Director of Finance, Marsha, sends her regrets, was unable to present, and I will try to do as good a job as she does. And by that, that means I'll be short, to the point.
Thank you.
So, anytime. Well...
Okay, go to page three last...
Page three last nine is currently showing a surplus of $157,521. Keep in mind that there are a number of figures here that are prorated, and we're still a ways away from the end of the year. Now, the 157 is broken down, so the surplus that applies to you directly as a municipality is the operating fund surplus amount of $138,333. That's on page three. So that's, that's the operating fund surplus. If you see the breakdown, obviously there's three other numbers like West Pabniko, Tuscan Sewer, and Middle Lower East Utility. Those don't belong to us. We manage them on their behalf. So the $138,000 is a consequence of a variety of things. I'll highlight the bigger pieces. Number one, what you'll find on that, on that very same page, you'll see transfers to reserves. There is a massive difference of $140,000 and $640. That is, that is due entirely to one thing. So we had anticipated that there would be a transfer from our operating reserve to the industrial commission for the demolition of Dominion Textiles, or partial demolition. As the members of the industrial commission already know that attended the meeting, that demolition prices came in and the timing was not good. So that won't happen this year. What will happen is the engineering, what will happen is, which, which essentially has already occurred, and, and the environmental testing that is essentially completed. So that will happen this year and will show on that line, but it'll be a heck of a lot lower than what we expected. So will the transfer revenue into the operating fund. So what you'll find on page one, don't go there because I'll, I'll get there eventually. If you go there, I'll lose you somewhere else. It's okay. But what you'll, what you'll find is there's a massive negative revenue number on the first page, and that's due almost entirely to, to the fact that that money's not going to come in. So we expected the money to come in from the reserve, out into the commission. Well, neither will happen this year. Okay? So that's, that's the biggest variance that you'll see from, from the last month. Okay? The other variances, I'll invite you to go to page two. The other variances are primarily in the areas of, well, there's general government services. I would say that it's, it's a, it's a, it's a scattering of reasons. There's a variety of reasons that would cause us to be 20,500 ahead of budget. I will note that there is one line that is very much in the negative, and we had a couple of issues here at the building, one being the oil leak, which you've already, you've already seen, and the other being an insurance job on the roof. So, but the, the, the oil leak was far and away the biggest issue. It's amazing how expensive those things can be to clean up properly, included monitoring wells, et cetera, the whole nine yards. It's unfortunate, but there's nothing we could do. And the deductible on those kinds of jobs, like they start at $10,000. We don't have that kind of coverage because our risk was low. So it's extremely expensive to, to cover. So, you know, sometimes those things happen and unfortunately you have to pay for the cleanup. The other, the other areas of note include healthcare. There's a, there's a big difference there, big positive difference, $64,000. One, we expected that we would have to pay for a portion of the family residency center in Yarmouth. We had been asked to participate in that. Well, in fact, we will not be participating in that financially, so that was, that's a true savings for us. And we had expected to take the money from, from the reserve, so neither one will occur. Okay? And the other is the doctor recruitment line, which we expect to be below budget also. The other areas include, you know, $31,000 in recreation, which includes a variety of different reasons why that might be a little ahead of schedule. So we, we are anticipating a surplus at the end of the year, the amount of which won't be 138. That will depend on timing of, of certain activity, but we are expecting a surplus at the end of the year.
Any questions for Cao Muse? Nope? Is that it? Anything else to add?
Not at this time.
Okay.
I'm making a motion that we accept the report.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carried. Thank you. Okay. Number six, other business entry decision, welcome pole banners. I think if I, this is, it's brought by Councillor Surratt?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
That's a notice of motion I had made, which I brought here. It's stated, it's for staff to find out the cost on, to initially buy and install pole banners, I guess, Acadian pole banners at our 15 tourist sites in the municipality. And that would kind of invite people, I guess, to, when people pass by, you see a banner on the pole, it kind of invites them to stop in and shows there's something there. They do this in Claire. I thought it, it's a, it's a, it's a good thing to have. Makes kind of sense of pride, puts a sense of pride in your community when you see these banners, kind of invites, inviting for people to come in. And, you know, so that's, that's the reason I, you know, I like to try to find out the cost, and that's, would be installed, obviously, get the banner and the brackets that go on a pole, and to get, to get a cost and get a price, and then we could move on and decide what we'd want to do.
Go ahead, Councillor Ward and Donaldson.
Do we, do we still have some of the brackets we had, or I imagine?
Yeah.
I don't know how many we had, but...
We don't have as many as we used to have.
Yeah.
They're not in the best condition, but we do have some that we used to have at the, we have the...
Oh, yeah, okay.
Maybe take some of those to...
Whatever. Okay. I, I think if I remember correctly, during the conga, there were some in West Pabniko. So did you guys get those?
That's where they originated.
Okay, okay. Good, good?
Again, 2012.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well...
They are like 11, 12 years old, but there could be some used.
Yeah. All right.
Or demetallized.
They're vinyl, like...
Oh, I thought they were demetallized.
The brackets.
Yeah. So I'd like to make a motion, if I could, that we accept this and to, sorry, I should have...
Yeah, go ahead.
And to make a motion that we instruct staff to get a price and, as the motion states, and total cost and, and report back. Would this be at the next meeting, the Cao Muse, or could, or would that give us, would that give you enough time? Or could we put that forward down maybe in the new year or...
You're the mover. It shouldn't, it shouldn't take that long.
Okay, it's not that long. For next meeting, if it was possible, then to make that motion.
Okay, so the motion...
I'll second the motion.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or, nope? Okay, so you've all heard the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carried. Okay. Okay. Six B, it's the Hipson Bridge. I think that was brought by Councillor Cathy Bork. Go ahead.
There, the Hipson Bridge, well, we call it the Hipson Bridge, I think it's recognized as a Hipson Creek. There was a study done by engineers, but my first term, so that must have been about four or five years ago, and they said the bridge was still sturdy, but in the winter months, we see icicles forming underneath, so it means there's water penetrating somewheres through. So, and this bridge here was constructed in 1900. I did a little research, I got Peter Cole, I got an article from the Argus. So if you guys want, I'll leave it here. If you guys want to read the, it gets all the history of who built it. David Jackson, immigrant from Ireland. And anyway, and this bridge here is a bridge that's in its original form, a stone bridge, and it's one of two in North America, and we were lucky to have one of these in our municipality. So we're always trying to promote to take care of what we have. So it is a very historical bridge. It's a place where they, we put a monument for drowned victims. It's a place where a lot of tourists are stopping. It's a place where local people go swimming. For years, people have been going there, so I think we should ask for funds through Canada Fund 150 and to see if we can do another study to fix up. And the, on the sides of the bridge, it's like a railing that was made out of stones, and a lot of them are falling probably over, in probably in the water. And I think maybe we could recover those, I'm not sure. And that's what I have, so if you want to read the article on, it was an article written by Doreen Anderson, and it's very well-written about the bridge. So, and a guy from Quinnen, actually, his name was Xavier Muse, she found out that he, from Quinnen, yeah, he, he worked on the bridge. There was an interview made by, I think, his son or something like that. So there's quite a bit of little history on that bridge.
Okay. All right. Are you making, you making a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we look into this and probably apply for funds to repair this bridge.
Okay. All right. Councillor Surratt, you had your...
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
But I have a question also.
Go ahead.
Councillor Bork, is there a committee that, is there an organized committee, nonpartic committee, that takes care of the, of the whatever goes on?
The site?
Of the ground.
Yes, there is a committee that takes that...
The municipality owns the bridge.
You've answered my question. Thank you very much. That's probably what I was going, my next question was. Thank you.
Councillor Donaldson?
Well, we've all realized this is going to pass, but I just want to let council know that somebody that travels by there numerous times a day in the summer, I was surprised to see how many people actually use that little park.
Yeah.
Yeah, I really was. Even like picnic lunches and, anyhow, it is a spot that's, that's used a fair bit.
Yeah. I know it's, it's a good venue for a lot of people who get married, go there and get pictures done. Yeah. Yeah.
It's also right next, next door to, to where the first Acadians landed.
Yeah, and that's...
Is that right?
When you, when you're at the bridge and you're on top of the bridge, you can see both sides of the harbor, which is, and my father used to tell me that the old people used to tell him that when the Acadians were first here, they used to, that used to be a site where they used to see the pirate ships coming.
Yeah.
And then they'd hit for the woods.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Question on the motion?
So it's been moved and seconded, seconded by, oh...
Was Gi.
Yeah, Gi, okay.
Just a question of clarity, like, so, so the motion is to apply for funds to repair the, the bridge?
Well, I don't know if the municipality wants to budget some money into it.
That's my only thought, is that, you know, if we, if we apply and, and fail to receive funding, you know, it, it might be interesting, you, you may not be ready to make that decision now, but, but it might be interesting to know, you know, what council's position would be on repairing the bridge generally. That might be right, like, I don't, I just, I just don't want to be in a situation where, where we apply and then we wait, 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 and then it's like...
Nothing happens.
And then we haven't anticipated perhaps, you know, another funding source, right?
Yeah.
So I don't know if that messes us up or anything. I just, I just wanted to be clear if council wanted.
Councillor Donaldson?
Well, now that the question's been answered, Gi asked, she said that it was a municipally-owned structure.
Yeah.
So, I mean, in the future, we're either going to have to let it fall down, tear it down, or keep it fixed up. So, I mean, it is, it is our responsibility one way or another, so if we can't find or source some kind of outside... So if we can't find, source some kind of outside funding, which is probably a long shot for a project like that, but who knows? It may be out there somewhere.
Could be.
Uh, but I think we have a responsibility to that bridge personally, to at least keep it structurally sound.
Should the prices, get the prices?
Should the request for funding come from us or from that committee or from...
This is why I was asking, yeah.
It can be dual.
Yeah.
Uh, it depends on the, it depends on the type of funding. The fact that it's municipally-owned, uh, suggests very strongly that we have to be the applicant.
Yeah, yeah.
That's right.
Um, you know, sometimes you can be associated with nonprofit organizations and, and they can apply on your behalf. Uh, but it'd be led by us.
Yeah, right.
For sure.
Okay.
It must be Charlene's department, the... Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Charlene and John.
Counselor Sorette, you had...
Yeah, just something for our CEO, or maybe we, we can apply, apply for the grant, for a grant, uh, whatever. And, uh, and before you apply, you have to get a price. Wouldn't that be correct? So maybe after getting a price, maybe, you know, although the motion hopefully will pass, uh, maybe with a price. And like Counselor Donaldson said, that if we don't get the grant, well, are we willing, once we know a price, are we willing to put five hundred thousand dollars in this or are we willing to put twenty thousand dollars in it? No, no, I'm just exaggerating over there.
Yeah.
But no, but it gives us an idea how much money we have to put in, but certainly we should be putting something in. It's, it's, it's our own thing, yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do you, you want to amend it or are we keeping the way?
Well, I think we should amend because as, as Richard said, it's our responsibility for that bridge, so...
Okay, so how is it going to read then?
Help Chris.
I think we have to, first of all, see how much it's gonna cost and how much Counsel wants to, how much Counsel wants to put towards the project.
Yeah.
More than likely a grant might be, might come if we've got some money in it ourselves, maybe more chance to get the, get a price in.
To evaluate the costs of repairs?
Pardon?
To evaluate the cost of repairs?
Agree.
Return information if that's all.
Yeah, yeah. There you go. So it's been amended and so you, you agree? Okay?
Yeah.
So I think we all understand the motion now? I do. All those in favor, seeing like I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Contrary? Carry, thank you. Okay, uh, which one is it now? Six C, plebiscite on the administration building review. Okay, is that, uh, yours, Counselor Sorette?
Yes, I can speak to that. Uh, I guess the motion is a notice of motion to ask staff to find out a cost of a plebiscite by phone, in telephone and paper ballot, in a standalone plebiscite. So if we were doing just a plebiscite on this, on the building, by the way, this is about a building or, or a retrofit. And also probably get a price on a plebiscite during the two thousand and sixteen municipal election on, like I said, on the administration building or retrofit. At least it would give us some idea of what it would cost. It's not a, a huge, huge job, I don't think, for staff to go and, and dig this out. And, uh, then once we get that, at least it'll give us numbers. And if we're interested, good. If we're not, then hey, at least it's, it's, it's information that, you know, if we find while we're going, uh, during our, uh, our town halls or our meetings with the public, that we're not getting enough people in there, this is my, gives us another idea of what it would cost. And if we want to go that route. So just, again, we're not, we're not forced to do anything, at least it's just to bring back prices. So I'd like to make a motion that we ask staff to bring us a cost on, uh, a standalone plebiscite and a cost on a plebiscite in the two thousand and sixteen municipal election on an admin building new or retrofit, retrofit. And have phone, in telephone and paper vote on each pricing.
Okay, so by, by phone, uh, you mean you use the phone in order to, to, to vote? It's not the telephone not calling people, right?
No, not calling people.
It's the actual, uh, yeah.
Like we did at the last election.
Okay. What was that? I'm just trying to think, what was the proper term?
Yeah.
Was it televoting? What was it? Huh? It was electronic voting.
Thank you.
So in telephone, that's, uh, on the computer, on, online? And then, and then of course, paper ballot's pretty straightforward. Okay, just, just to, just wanted to clarify that. Yeah. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor? Anybody care to second the motion?
Oh, seconding.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded? Uh, any more questions or? Nope? Uh, nope. I guess Danny?
That, we, we had, we had some, some figures sent to us based on this, right? Like, is that the figures that you're, that, that we're looking for through the chair to, to, to Alan or to, or to Gi? Like, there were some figures that came out on that.
Counselor got those figures, right?
Yeah, I mean, they were really high level. Um, I, I, because I, I didn't know whether Counsel wanted to go down that road, uh, what I did was quickly look at what we had. And so, you know, in the quick assessment, um, you know, the cost is, I guess what I would say to you in response to the, to the motion that's been seconded is, is that the cost, uh, will depend on whether you do it during the election or whether you take a special election and the, and the difference is quite considerable. I think what I, and, and, you know, it's hard for me to give you a hard number on, on, uh, on it being during an election. And the reason is because, uh, we don't know how many districts will have an election, right? So the districts that have an election, the cost is, is virtually zero incrementally, right? Because you just add, you just tag on the plebiscite.
Yeah.
You tag all that to the, to, to the cost of, of doing an in-televote, it's virtually zero. But if you had an acclamation, like, let's say you had five acclamations, you know, it's not, not impossible, then those costs would have been avoided in a non-plebiscite situation, right? So, so you can't have the plebiscite only in the places where, you, you have to have a plebiscite across all nine districts. So that's why it's difficult for me to say, this is how much it's gonna cost, because it depends on whether, whether there's gonna be an election or not in, in each of the districts.
And, and it depends if there's voting for a school board also.
Uh, yeah, because some of that, some of that we can re, be reimbursed.
Yeah.
Uh, the cost is reimbursable if there's a, there's a school board attachment, there's no question. But I think if you did electronic, we, we've received information that suggests that if you did a special election, plebiscite only, that was municipal-wide, uh, it would cost about, um, you know, it would cost about seven thousand dollars only, only from an e-voting perspective, right? So that's like, how much it would cost per elector is a dollar, it's a dollar twenty-five per eligible voter. That's, so that number's wrong, hang on. It's like sixty-two hundred eligible voters times one point two five. Cause about seventy-one thirty, that's just for the ability to vote and for the letter that goes with, uh, that, it goes with that. It does not include any, what they call voter list cleansing. Uh, there's an additional cost to that of sixty cents. So I don't know that you would do that in a plebiscite or not. If, particularly if you had a special election, you might, you might walk away from that expense. Now, now if you're doing paper also, if you're, you're also, you also have deputy returning officers that you would engage for at least a day to, to make sure that people had access to computers. And so we know that that, you know, typically costs, uh, you know, two to three thousand dollars. So, um, and then of course, there's the general election costs that might run you another two, three thousand. So we're, we're talking about, you know, probably on the lower end fourteen, um, to, to run an election like that. Now, I think it would be less expensive if you did it entirely paper. I think it would be, uh, for a special election.
But, but again, uh, whether it's in telephone or not, you still need, you, like at, at the last election, we still had some DROs.
Yeah.
In, in, not everywheres, but we did have some, some, uh, areas where people could go vote if they wanted help, right? So we were, we were still paying some staff to, to man some of the poles, even though it was all in telephone though. So there would be a cost there for sure as well, yeah.
I'd say you're talking about probably, you know, it's, it's, it's hard to pin down, but it's easier to pin down if it was a plebiscite outside of the election, as opposed to it being in the election for the reasons I had already described.
Yeah.
Um, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna run three grand for DROs, uh, by the time they're traveled and trained and, 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 and the costs related to that. And the election costs are usually three to four thousand dollars, so you're seven thousand in right there. If you're doing paper balloting, that cost rises considerably. That cost is reduced considerably when you do e-voting. But e-voting generally is a little bit more expensive in this particular instance.
Yes, and you still need a returning officer, whether it's within or you'd need a returning officer for that.
Correct.
And if you, and if you use it within, then it means you're, it may not be a direct cost, but it's a, it's a cost.
Correct.
As well, because you're, you're taking away some of their responsibility.
That's right.
To, to look after the, the, yeah. So there's a cost involved in, in that as well on paper.
Yeah, there, there, yeah. If, if you're gonna hire, if we don't have the ability to do that internally, it will probably cost you between three and four thousand dollars.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
So, realize that I haven't been given instruction to look for this, but knowing that I had a lot of it pretty not far away, I decided to give you those numbers. If you want me to dig deeper, the motions is the question, right? And we'll dig deeper, but I wanted to give you an idea which might in, inform you further on that discussion.
Yeah. Okay, Counselor Albright?
Thanks. Um, I guess, I just, I've been thinking a lot about this and I, I don't think, I, I don't think I would support the plebiscite, whether it be on its own or with a vote. First of all, I don't think it should be with another vote with the next election coming up. I really think it's our decision to be made. I don't think personally, cause we've had this discussion. And I respect what, what counselors have said in that it will become a political issue. But yet, I feel like I know what it was like to be a new counselor in my first term. And if that decision had been put on me then, I would have had a really difficult time trying to figure out how to make that decision. I feel like we've put it on our plan. I feel like we need to kind of make the decision. I was gonna say something, but it's not appropriate to say, so I won't say it. Um, but I think we have to, it's up to us. And I feel like, especially after listening to CEO Muse say that the building fund met, they've come up with several ideas to get the word out, to invite people in, to have surveys. There, those are all great ideas, I think, to be able to get public information. I do want as much feedback as possible, but also, uh, I've brought this up with a few of the residents that, that I've talked to about, about the elec, about, sorry, the building. And they really don't want a plebiscite. They don't want, people don't like to vote for things they don't have to vote for. Unless it's an election, they really don't. Even the second election that I had last two, two years ago, although we had a high rate, I got a lot of flack door to door that I don't want to vote. And honestly, I didn't think we were going to have a high rate because we had, I had so many people say, I'm not voting again. I voted once, that's it. So I think taking all that into consideration, thinking about all the options that CEO has talked to us about tonight of, of public feedback, I'm, I don't support the plebiscite. And I just want to make that known. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Albright. Counselor Sorette?
Uh, probably maybe commenting, I wasn't gonna comment on that, but on Counselor Albright said, you, you said it's our decision. Wouldn't it be the taxpayers' decision? They're the ones, I don't know if that's what, which way you meant there? Cause I don't think it's my decision. I have to go by what the taxpayers say. We're building a new building, uh, to me, it's the taxpayers. Whatever the decision is now, I don't know if that's a context you meant in it or not. Because I can't make, you know, once I get feedback from my, from the people, if we have town halls or whatever, that's how I will vote, but what the residents, the taxpayers say, it's their money. That's why I was elected. Just wanted to clear.
Counselor Albright?
I just want to, last time, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, that's exactly what I mean. I don't mean here, sitting around the table.
Okay.
I definitely mean after public input, for sure. We, but I feel too, we, what I mean is, I feel like we have to move forward on this. I don't want to put the brakes on it. I don't want to hold it back. I don't want to wait for another council to come in and make the decision. I feel like within this term, we should have a, a, a good base of what we want, what we think our public wants us to do so that we can make that decision. But I definitely, yes, for sure, with public input, absolutely.
Okay, uh, Ward and Donaldson?
Yeah, I, like, I, I am not gonna support this motion because I don't think, I, I would not like to, uh, to have this, uh, added on to, to a job that's already full. We, we have some numbers that are close enough, I think. And, uh, I don't think we have to put the staff through this and, and give us some more numbers and, and, and do all that, so, and, and like Counselor Albright, I, I wouldn't support the plebiscite. So I don't think this is, as far as I'm concerned, I'm not gonna go through this.
Okay. Counselor Donaldson?
Yeah, I second the motion so we could get discussion going.
Yeah.
But I'll do, probably end up doing a Mike Murphy. But, uh, um, this, the age-old, the old, age-old argument that goes on Aldrick and me and any number of us that have been here for a while. It comes down, like, I agree with the, the public counsel, like, the public getting involved and seeing what they think through meetings and anybody that's interested will get out and find out the facts. There's gonna be people just stay home and complain no matter what you do. So I don't agree with the plebiscite either. I, and, uh, as far as the timeline goes, when we should make the decision, I haven't decided yet what that is or how, what I'll support. But, uh, back to Gi's point, like, we are elected and it's the age-old argument. We're elected to make decisions. Once we're here, do we go run into the public every time we need to make a decision or not? So it's one, it's a half a dozen of one and half a dozen of the other. So, I mean, they put us here for a reason, to make decisions. And if we can't do that, some of them will be very popular decisions, but that's just the way it's always, always been. And sorry, Gi, I can't support your motion.
Okay, uh, for the last time, Counselor Sorette?
Uh, I guess, I guess when it came on, on to putting this on here, I was asked by, and I'm not putting the blame on, uh, on the, on, uh, the EA, uh, uh, Mr. Fraun, but I was asked to put this back on because I had made a notice of motion at the last meeting to bring this up. I'm not saying that we need a plebiscite. I'm not saying we should have a plebiscite. I was asked to bring this up and I wouldn't have brought it up because I already made a notice of motion, which I thought was gonna be brought back here. Now we get, we got an email that said this is the price or this is, and I'm not sure. And we were given three or four prices by our CEO on, I think it's this or I think it's that. And I believe it'll be this and believe it'll be that. So I guess at this point, I'm just saying, hey, I made a notice of motion at the last meeting. I was asked to bring this back up by, by Chris, which I did. And I'm not calling for an election, I'm calling for a price, uh, that we need to do a plebiscite. I just, this is why I brought it up, I guess. And I thought a notice of motion, which I already made at the last meeting, I didn't think I had to bring it back as another notice of motion. That's what I'd probably, I guess, when it's getting this sticky, I may as well kind of defend myself. This is the reason I brought it up. Uh, uh, notice of motion, once you make it, I, I don't know why you have to bring it back up here, it was already made.
Because it was a notice of motion.
Right?
Uh, Counselor Muse?
Yeah, I was gonna say that it was a notice of motion, but I do believe a notice of motion would say that you're gonna bring that motion to this, to here. But didn't we, at the last meeting after you spoke, wasn't there a motion made for you to look at that? For, for our staff? So, so really, it wasn't a notice of motion anymore. It was a motion that was made at that last meeting, if I remember, wasn't it?
I, I don't, I don't believe...
It never was a motion that was made?
I don't believe a motion was made, you know, and, and, you know, um, you know, Chris, Chris was, was doing exactly what he should have done, um, which is to make sure that you are clear in what you would like to propose the motion to be. In the past, what we've done with the notice of motion is staff has gotten itself, get, gotten ahead of itself on certain notices of motion. Uh, a notice of motion is quite simply, look, at the next meeting, I'm gonna bring the... Uh, a notice of motion is quite simply, look, at the next meeting, I'm gonna bring this for a motion for discussion. So, what it does is, it prepares councillors for that discussion. And so, what staff has done to support council in those situations is, is, you know, not all the time, but it has done so, that it's provided, uh, some information in support of a motion that doesn't exist.
Right.
And so, I think, I think that's where, you know, uh, it's, it's, and so, and so, again, that's why you would have received an email from me around the, the, the cost, because, because it's, you know, uh, it was just our tendency to want to support council in decisions. And so, and so, that information, you know, was, and then I think the email says it's, it's pretty, pretty fast, right, pretty high level. If, if you want me to go deeper, well, I'm gonna need a motion to do that, right? So, so I think, you know, part of this, unfortunately, councillor Silet, might be, you know, might be a result of us getting ahead of ourselves as staff. But, but the way that it was dealt with in this particular instance is exactly the way it should be dealt with, and, uh.
I agree with that.
And, and so, uh, you know, uh, if there was any concern or misunderstanding, certainly, you know, from our perspective, we, you know, w- we, we certainly didn't want that to be the case, right? So, I hope that clarifies matters.
Go ahead councillor.
Again, I, I think the notice of motion is especially to protect council against somebody bringing in a motion at the last minute with no preparation, no.
We've seen it before.
And, and, you know, it's, it's happened so many times, but this is what the notice of motion is for.
Okay, councillor Donaldson.
I was just gonna say pretty well exactly the same thing Aldrick said, the reason we brought this in is because years ago, somebody would make a motion late in the meeting, with nobody having any preparation or any information. And they'd make the motion based on who was here that night, knowing it would go through regardless, so, I mean, that's, that's why we, yeah, that's why we do it.
Okay, so we have.
Motion on the motion.
We have a motion on the floor, all those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary?
Aye.
Okay, so I guess it's, uh, motion is denied. All right, move on to six D. Nikhil Home for Special Care Partial Tax Exemption Requests, it's an attachment with one page, and I do believe that we did get by email the, uh, maybe the motion from last year, is that correct?
Yeah, yes, the original motion.
Yeah, okay, and is it, uh, on here, or is it just, uh, did we just get it via email?
I think it was just, is only via email, I don't think it's attached.
Okay.
What's attached is the letter from Nikhil.
Okay.
And so, their, their request is to, to cap their taxes at twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
So, so, um, to do that, you actually have to change your policy, because their taxes will be increasing based on their assessment. So, in order to bring it back to twenty-five, you'll, we'll have to do a calculation and change the exemption, just wanted to be clear on that point.
So, so we can either do that or make a motion that we reduce by six, six thousand two thirty, right? And if the assessment goes up, their, their tax bill will go up, right?
I'm not sure I followed you.
You know what I, uh?
I'm not sure I followed you there, Warren. Oh, because of the equipment allowance was cut in half, is that which?
Oh, oh, equipment, yeah. Sorry, yeah. It's fourteen thousand seven two seven, right?
Yeah, so what the letter is saying is, you know, last year, their taxes would have been forty grand, and we, we took them down to twenty-five in accordance with the motion which we were allowed to do.
Yeah.
And since that time, uh, the chair is identifying some of the issues that they're facing with now. One is a decrease in their operations funding for the original part of the building, and then they have a small equipment allowance cut in half, and then wage freezes, et cetera. So, so, um, they're basically requesting, uh, the continued partial exemption status. And my understanding is that, is that the, the taxes would be capped at twenty-five thousand dollars, so, so, uh, which means that we would have to change the policy to make that number work, right?
Well, I'll make the same motion, I'll make the same motion as last year, and we'll, we'll increase the amount to seventeen thousand six hundred and eight, that will cover it. If you say it's four hundred and seventy-six dollars more for taxes.
Yeah. That should do it, I, I hope it's, it's, it may not be exact, right?
Right, well, what's gonna be within?
Oh, hundreds.
Handful of dollars.
Yeah, it should be.
So, I mean, I'm, it's speaking for the board in theory now, I think people start to argue that. But, um, and that's to give them a full year under the new, under the new budget of, of, uh, the home with the private extra bid, so they'll know more by the end of the fiscal year what.
Their books, what their books look like, um, so then we can reassess this again next year. As of now, the, as of now, uh, the books are looking pretty healthy for this year, but it's only early in the year, so, uh, we'll know more at the end of the fiscal year, we'll readjust it. So, I'll make the motion, the same as last, approve a partial tax exemption for one year to Nikhil for Home for Special Care in the amount of seventeen thousand six hundred and eighty dollars.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, uh, councillor Muse?
No, I was gonna second.
Okay, councillor Silet.
The, uh, the taxes, the taxes, they're, they're not, if I, if I remember right from last year, the taxes are not included in their budgets, those that are on the board. The taxes are not in, as a rule, not included, and if, if I'm correct, CEO Muse, she told us that as a rule, these, these, uh, nursing homes are normally not taxed, and we're one of the few that does, or maybe that's all you said, no?
Uh, it's all over the map.
It's all over the map, yeah.
Before the MGA came into play, uh, a lot of them got an exemption through a private, private members bill. So, and a lot of them are owned by municipal units, not unlike this particular, not unlike ours, right? The Villa Khadien is another example of one being owned by municipality Claire, for example, so, so they, it's all over the map, which provides the province the opportunity to say, look, we're not funding property taxes. Because they know that not all nursing homes actually have, are actually charged property taxes, and so, so it puts, it puts Nikhil in a tough position. I remember the discussion last year, puts you in a tough position, 'cause you didn't wanna give the province a break, you want to give Nikhil a break.
Right.
So, so, you know, you know, and this, this, this motion is basically, you know, maintaining the position that you, that you took last year.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, there's a motion on the floor, all those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, carried. All right, uh, six E, tax exemption list review, I guess this is kind of a follow-up to, to D?
Do, would you use a motion, do you approve that list, or?
Yes, yes, we do, we, we, as part of our policy, we need to get your approval every year, uh, just so that you know what we do, what we, what we started to do, uh, more so now than before. Is we look at this list, we make sure there's been no ownership changes to this list, 'cause you know sometimes that happens.
Yeah.
Um, so the list is unchanged from last year, did that work? Obviously, the partial exemption, uh, for Nikhil, it's still correct on the list, but obviously, the number will change based on your motion. So, I would recommend that you, uh, approve this list as presented.
Okay, it's been moved, moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried. Okay, six, uh, six F, relief of, requests of, for relief of interest, and I think that's, uh.
Chongbu.
Yeah, it's just a total of eight dollars and forty-two cents, it was a, an issue of timing, CEO Muse?
Yeah.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried.
En Francais, il disait, c'est un timing issue.
Wait, yeah.
I don't know if I have the translation. Think that one was understood by all.
Yeah, six G, uh, December meetings.
So, yeah, so we know the first meeting in December is.
A week away.
Two, two weeks away.
Two weeks.
We know it's an issue.
And we won't have one at the end of the month.
No, we, we never have committee of the whole at the end of December, but we always bring it up this way, so, so the request to council would be to, uh, A, certainly confirm, uh, your ongoing position for the committee of the whole of December, but also to consider whether or not, uh, your December meeting can continue, right? So, so the December meeting is dated, dated the eighth, um, you have the option to move that date in a different, uh, timeframe, which is, which might be easier for some fishermen. Um, that, that's entirely, entirely up to council, we know that there's probably, uh, three, if not more councillors.
Three unless, you're not involved in the fishery at all, okay.
It doesn't mean that they'll be here on the fifteenth either.
No.
No, no guarantee.
Really, you know, I mean, no, I've seen it all.
But I guess it's, but the next meeting falls almost in Christmas time, right?
The fifteenth.
No, I mean, if we had the regular council, would be when?
The regular council would be the eighth.
And then, uh.
COW.
Yeah, and then COW would be, uh, on the twenty-second, right?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, yeah, which, yeah. So, yeah, so what's council's feeling?
Do you have, what, what is your feeling, do you think, I know it's our decision, but do you have much for the eighth, or? Do we, are, since we don't have a meeting before January, can we?
Uh, the only, the only concern I'd have is, is the, um, is, is if we're gonna set up any sort of communication, like the questions for municipal in-building, if we wanted to engage people in that. Um, you know, we could, we could do that, if it was the only thing, it seems a bit unusual to, to have a meeting only to make that motion. I don't know if there's, there's a presentation on it, or?
Thank you.
So, there's no presentation on the eighth?
Yeah.
Um, honestly, I think if it was only that issue, we could probably handle that via email and then endorse it in January, the motion. Like, I wouldn't wanna hold up the, the work that needed to happen.
Yeah.
Um, but, but, you know, we may not even get to it by the eighth either, right, I'm not, I'm not positive, so.
Okay.
Uh, and right now, in terms of the agenda, Chris, I just want a couple of things, smaller information items. Typically, we do one meeting in the middle of the month, that's what we've done the last three or four years, but it doesn't mean that we have to do that.
Yeah, uh, councillor Donaldson.
Yeah, I was just gonna mention basically what he said, why don't we leave it open, like, an open date, and if enough comes up, that we need to have a meeting. Uh, the warden, how long does the warden need to give notice, three days?
Three days.
So, yeah, I mean, it could be the fifteenth, it could be the, it, it doesn't have to be on a Tuesday, it can be any day after the eighth.
That's correct.
Except the twenty-fifth. So, uh, I mean.
Twenty-four probably wouldn't be that great either, sorry.
So, I suggest we just leave it open, and if, I mean, a meeting needs to be called, well, I mean, you're gonna get six here anyhow, with three, three maybe fishing or involved with fisheries, so. So, you can't, you should be able to get a quorum with three days' notice.
Yeah.
If there's something that's urgent comes up, that's my suggestion.
Nobody's got planned vacations in December, or, no?
Vacation, staying.
Okay, staycation?
Staycation.
Do we need a?
A motion, or?
I'd say a motion for sure for the committee of the whole, and.
Oh, yeah.
And then you can, you don't, you know, it's up to you how you want to decide the other one.
But our normal meeting, do, should we have, uh, I'm, I'm not sure if we should have a motion just to say that we're not gonna have the meeting on a regular, on a regular date that we normally have.
I think you can make that, I don't think, I think that, um, if you were not gonna meet in December, then I think a motion would be appropriate.
Yes, right.
For that, I think, you know, cancelling the COW should be done by motion.
Yeah.
And then if you wanna given, you know, if you wanna leave the other one open, that's okay.
You've done it before, and you've called a meeting when you were, you've done it before.
We've done that in the summer, we do that in the summer.
Yeah, okay.
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, the meeting, the COW meeting, uh, of, uh, December the twenty-ninth, uh, be cancelled.
Okay. Moved by councillor Silet, seconded by councillor Donaldson, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried. Okay, just six H, Argyle Firefighters Association Propose Changes to the MGA. Okay, we have an attachment, it's a letter sent to CEO Muse by Stephen Jekar, who's the president of the Argyle Firefighters Association. CEO Muse.
Uh, so, how read the letter, first of all, I don't know who wrote it, but if Stephen wrote it, it was good.
It is good.
It's a well, it's a well-crafted letter, I just wanted to say that out loud. Um, I guess what they're asking is, is for support from the council. Their concern comes from a presentation that they were given about some of the suggested changes to section ten of the MGA, as it relates to fire departments. And so, um, uh, councillor Silet was actually at the meeting, and so he could probably speak to the, to the actual, uh, what was said in that particular meeting. My understanding of the issue is, is that, uh, um, the concern is, comes down to, are there going to be changes in the way that fire services are delivered? Um, so the government, so section ten says, um, I don't know, in the wrong place, anyway.
So, it's just that somebody suggested that to the committee.
Well, I think there's some wording changes in the MGA that are causing some, some fear.
Yeah.
Uh, with the chiefs, because what they, right now, the way that fire depart, the fire services are being delivered, they're being delivered the way that they're being delivered, right? And, and so, any sort of change to the wording is the concern, that all of a sudden, they're no longer volunteer fire departments, that it's, it's a municipal super-fire department, and that they lose their identity. And so, I think that's their biggest issue. Um, I did raise this with, uh, uh, the province, because, um, I'm, I'm doing the MGA review side for the finances, so I just, I s- I flipped them the concern, and you know, they, what they've said to us was, like, look, like, we're in the data collection stage right now, it's too early to know, uh, what that's ultimately gonna look like. However, um, you know, it's a pretty legitimate concern that was raised by the fire chiefs, and they're asking, they've written it to me, but I'm sure what they'd like to, to understand is, 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 um, is council's position is on changes to fire services.
Okay, so that's what they're looking for, basically?
Yeah, they, they want input in any proposed changes, if we're entertaining any changes, and I think they, um, you know, that, yeah, they, they, they felt like there was a lack of information, and and that they wanna be represented in any future discussion at the provincial committee level.
Okay, yeah.
So, um, so that's really their request.
Yeah.
Final decision on this is gonna be about in a year and a half or two years or whatever.
Yeah, and, and I think their concern is, is, you know, that it doesn't slip by.
Yeah.
That nobody's watching, and then it goes through, right?
Yeah.
That's their concern.
Yeah, okay, uh, councillor Silet.
Uh, just to further to what, uh, our CEO said, uh, it's something that some of the chiefs were at meetings up in the valley, or up in Halifax, I, I think it was in the valley, that one. And, uh, it said, you know, like, like the, our CEO sent a letter to us, an email to us, uh, that the municipality, they heard, uh, will, shall provide or must provide, uh, fire service. So, if it must provide service, and the municipality must, they're afraid that if they must, then maybe we'll have one super, like, like, uh, our CEO said, one super fire department in Tuskegee. Which was one of the comments made, I think, uh, Danny, you were there, maybe one super fire department in, in Tuskegee, and the rest might be little satellite offices, and everything they've worked so hard for, and all of a sudden, everything was taken from their hands, I guess, it's coming back to what our CEO said, and they were really concerned about that. And they wanted to kind of know what our position was, and I spoke a little bit to our CEO about it, and, and I did convey the message to Al, Al Budrow, again on the phone, that, like, like our CEO said. We need, whichever way it goes, we need fire protection, and we've got it now, to their good volunteerism and their good work they do. And if, if we must, we'll be going the same route, which was, like I said, just what CEO Muse said, you know, if we must, then we're gonna go ask him again to, to keep what they've got. So, I think that's what they want, that, they want that reassured.
Okay, councillor Donaldson.
Yeah, okay, you cleared up some of it, I didn't even know what we were talking about, it was, it was, can some, some concerns that they may be amalgamated, like, eliminate some of the smaller ones, and, okay. And, uh, so I have a question, like, and Claire, like, I've spent a lot of time going through Claire, is there only the Metagen Fire Station and the Littlebrook Fire Station for the whole municipality? Do they have more than two?
Yes.
Okay.
Outlaw.
They do it a lot different than we do.
Okay, so there is other examples? So there is other examples out there of how things are done, but...
They have a pot of money, and if one department needs something, they can draw from that pot, or whatever, and the fire truck, or whatever, they don't have a specific amount to eat, I don't think.
So the issue here was to try to save the ten fire departments, basically how they're funded and operated, and have their community base...
Leave it as is.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely.
Just to be clear, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, I was just going to, Counsel Muse had his side on.
He's first.
Okay, Counsel Muse.
Yeah, it's coming back to, what they're afraid of is that the municipalities, it's going to become a municipality's fire department, right? When it says it shall instead of may, right? And by doing that, what they're afraid of is to cut costs, because that's very expensive if they've got to run all these fire departments. It's going to become more of an expense to the municipality, so the municipality is going to say, well, we can do this much more economically if we have one department, and they said we're going to lose all our trucks, because now we have two trucks at most of the areas, and all of a sudden, we're going to be stuck with a fire department centrally located, we're probably only going to have two trucks for the whole area, and for the mutual aid, we're not going to have the equipment in order to handle mutual aid. If we're called, we're going to have to leave our, we can't, we can't bring all our equipment to Yarmouth. If Yarmouth calls, then Yarmouth won't come help us. So that's what their concern was, and I think they're really going overboard with their presumptions, like of what would happen. Fire departments are not going to change, right? Just because it says shall or may. I mean, the way they operate. I think they're afraid that it's all going to become the municipality's responsibility. Their budget is going to have to handle that, and if it's going to go that way, then they figure municipality is not going to put up with that many fire departments, they're going to amalgamate them all, and get rid of equipment. That's their concern from what I got from the meeting that I was at with...
That's included in what you got there.
Okay.
Just want to make reference to the section that they're talking about, okay? Because whenever you make a change to rules, there's always context, right? There's always, you know, like, we've talked about this, and other, and other, right? Like, and so if you don't read the whole thing, you lose something. And so this is what I think might have happened. The municipal role, what they're looking to do is change the word "may" to "shall." But let me read you, it's not long, let me read you the sentence. "A municipality may maintain and provide fire and emergency services by providing the service, comma, assisting others to provide the service, comma, working with others to provide the service, or a combination of means." And so if you change the word "may" to "shall," it doesn't change the nature of how you deliver the service. It's, the reason why I think, this is my opinion, I don't know for certain, the reason why they want to go from "may" to "shall" is because that's exactly what's happening, right? Is that the municipalities are actually doing the service. So don't just say "may," just call it what it is, which is that they do provide the service. We do provide the service, but we subcontract that service to our valuable volunteers.
Yeah.
And that's, that's really, that's where something is getting lost.
Yeah.
And so, you know, there's nothing, there's no skin off our back, you know, assuming council agrees to take the position that, that that shouldn't change, right? But I think, I think what they, what they're asking a little bit is for council to take a position.
That's right.
Also, and you don't do it now, but I think they want you to take a position on this at some point.
Yeah. Okay. So we could, we could take a position by writing them a letter or passing a motion to write them a letter that, you know, like, stating our, our position?
Yes, you could definitely, you could definitely entertain a motion today that, if passed by majority, would, would, would give staff, or give us all the ability to respond accordingly to the letter, for sure.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
One second, question.
You've heard the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carry. Okay, thank you. Okay, 6I, building review financing options.
You had given us that already, right? Maybe we didn't, the public didn't get that.
No, I think, this has been brought by Counsel Siret for public discussion.
All right. Go ahead, Counsel Siret.
To what, to, on the building, the finances and what's on the report, I've had some people, and not a lot, I think there was only two or three that asked me this, and I thought it might be important for us to bring it out here so it's televised. And I know our CEO made a good, a good explanation on the new building, what the positions are, what financing on the weekend, which was, I listened to, it was great. But certainly, here's another avenue, where it's televised, where, and here's the question is, on the, on the website, what's on there, it says that we could, we can use a, if it costs 2.1 to retrofit, or to build new, 2.3, we, they've seen there's 1.6 million there, but where's the rest of the money coming from? And that's, like I said, it's only two or three that asked me. And I said, you know what, why don't we bring this out? Myself, I wanted to know. Yeah, so where does the rest of the money come from? Where do we, do we go borrow it from the municipal finance corporation? Do we use it from our reserves? So I've spoken to the CEO, and he said he wouldn't mind explaining that to all of us, maybe we all know, but especially the people that are out there. So if you wouldn't mind, Alad, it'd be great if you could put that out there.
Thank you.
Okay. You know, since we produced that report, we actually got hard, hard numbers from the municipal finance corporation, right? So, you know, we're not going to borrow if we don't have to borrow. And so, you know, what we have stated here in earlier meetings, that it's maybe less clear in the report, is that the money is available, that there is sufficient funds in the capital reserve to pay for either option, either option. Well, I guess the do-nothing option doesn't cost a lot, so the money's there for all three options.
That's right.
So, however, you know, in looking at the information, what we found subsequent to the report is that if we borrow short-term, like for less than five years, or up to five years, the cost of borrowing is actually less than our ability to generate revenue with the money in the reserve. And so that's an unusual opportunity.
Absolutely.
And so we've seen this once before, we saw it with the West Pabniko Sewer, where it was cheaper for us to, to not use our reserves to lend money to the project, it was cheaper to borrow, because the, again, same reason. So, so, you know, if, if a decision was made today, and if we had to decide today how we were going to pay for it, I would suggest that we would probably borrow the entire amount, and that we would use our reserves to pay it over five years. So regardless of when the reserve pays, either immediately, or over time, over five years, it's the reserve that's paying, right? It's not new money, it's old money. So I think that's clear, it has to be very clear. That's not, and that's not necessarily that obvious, because when you borrow money, it suggests that that's new money, right? But the only reason why we would consider borrowing is because the cost of borrowing is lower than our ability to generate revenue on the money in the bank account. So there's a $22,000 benefit overall to the taxpayers by, imagine that, by borrowing. So, so it's a little bit counterintuitive, but that's, that's, that's what it is today. Now, that can change, right? This is one of the reasons why we said, why now? Like, in the report, it says, why now? Well, the cost of borrowing is low. And, and that's one of the reasons why now might be, might be a good time to consider making an investment, whatever that looks like. So I hope that clarifies things, and in fact, it's better information than, than, than that's in the, than there is in the report. So whatever information we'll put in the newsletter will clarify that point much better than, than the report does.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other, any other questions? No? Okay, we'll move on. Okay, 6J, letter of support, monument de l'Acadiane. So this is, came from the CAPEB, and it's a letter of support. Just trying to figure out what it's all about.
Okay, yeah.
I can explain a little bit. If you, if you would like to. Just to give you some background information to where this came from, a few months ago or a few years ago, the Economic Development Committee met with Clyde at the CAPEB, and he was asked to look at the possibility of installing or putting monument de l'Acadiane, which is a monument that has the historical information regarding the Acadians on the actual, like, the Grand des Anges, and what happened at the actual location, or the region that the monument is in. There's examples of it online, and it's found throughout the world. The most recent one that was installed was in Claire, just a few months ago. So if you do look online, you'll see examples of it. And the, the idea was to mark the 250th anniversary of the return of the Acadians to our region, and the 150th anniversary of Canada in 2017. So this is sort of where it comes from. So Clyde contacted the SNR, which is the Societe Nationale des Acadians, which oversees the installation of these monuments. There's a criteria that you have to abide by, and you have to follow a process to get the monument. So the CAPEB created a committee with local members of different communities in our municipality, as well as Marc Glavot, who is a professor of Acadian history at Université Sainte-Anne, and actually a director on the commission that oversees the installation of the monuments. So they met three times. November, November 14th, they visited 13 potential sites within the municipality using the criteria provided to them by the commission. And it was determined that Pabniko would be the most preferred location based on its Acadian history, dating to before the Acadians arrived, and after they actually returned after the deportation. So two specific locations within the Pabniko region were discussed, and that was Le Village and Le Musée. So both of those organizations were contacted, and they're currently deciding or discussing with their boards whether or not they would accept the monument, because once the monument is installed, it's the responsibility of the organization to, to look for the maintenance, and if anything would happen, vandalism or anything like that. So in the meantime, while the organizations are discussing if they would accept it or not, Clyde at the CAPEB, the director, manager of the CAPEB, is looking into applying for funds through the Canada 150 Fund for the entire cost of the project. So the project costs roughly $55,000, including the activities, the installation, and the actual cost of the monument. It's a fairly large monument, and like I said, I wish, if you do look online, you'll be able to see examples. So he is requesting a letter of support for that funding application for the Canada 150 Fund, and that's the only thing he's looking for at this time. If it happens that the application for the full project does not, gets rejected, he does have another funding source that he could apply for, but that would only be for 50% of the project. So he would, in turn, then have to find other sources of funding to, to complete the project. But this letter of support is to support the application of funding for the entire project through the Canada 150 Fund.
Okay. Warren Dantnaman?
Is, what we're talking about here, is that the same that's on the waterfront in Halifax?
That's correct.
Okay.
So there are some throughout, well, some in Louisiana, and Labrador, and Quebec City, they're, they're found throughout the areas where the history of it would be prominent.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Anybody care to make a motion to support this, or?
I'll make a motion to support, to send a letter of whatever, support.
Letter of support?
Yeah, for this application.
Okay. Any more discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carry. Thank you. Okay, make sure I don't miss anything here. Yep. Correspondents, and for information, thank you, letter from Mayor Regis La Baum, that for you?
Just for information, it's in, in French and also in English.
Okay. Financial requests, financial requests, we have one, we have a district community grant, and that's Counsel Muse, go ahead.
It's a letter from the Kentville Volunteer Fire Department, and it says, Counsel Danny Muse, Kentville Volunteer Fire Department is planning on doing some repairs to the fire hall this winter. $500 would be a great help for this project, and it's from Chief Bruce Gates, and I would move that we give $500 from, yeah, from the community...
District community.
District community grants.
Your district.
My community district grant. Yeah, I want to take it from hers, but she won't let me.
I have $500.
So it's been moved? Anybody second? Okay, okay. Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carry. Do we have any, number nine, notice of motions? Any notice of motions? Nope. Question period. Nobody in the gallery? Number 11, anybody care to move for adjournment?
Move to adjournment.
Okay. Second there?